I'd like to call this meeting to order of the Lemmonster School Committee. Today is Monday, September 20th. If everyone can please stand to say the Pledge of Allegiance, which is over here.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'm going to read our school committee's statement. The committee represents the needs of all Lemmonster Public Schools students and places their interests above all others. We will exercise leadership, adhere to our protocols, and base our decision upon a reasoned assessment of all available information. We will advocate for each of our schools and support high-quality public education in Lemmonster. Before we do the open forum, I just wanted to remind folks that if you plan on taping this meeting, you need to inform us, other than obviously LA TV, we know they're doing it. All right, having no one come forward, we will open our public forum. If you would like to address the committee, please come up to the microphone, state your name and address for the record, please.
How are you doing?
Good, thank you.
I'm David Arretti, Manles Street. I spoke last week in reference to proper mask usage. I'd like to see a couple of you took my advice. Peter and Brandon, Ron, I don't even know what that's supposed to be. It's almost kind of insulting, actually, to vote for masks and then not practice what you preach. I didn't even come here to actually say anything tonight, but to see that walking in is just... I don't really know what we're doing here at this point. Pretty much, I just wanted to point out the hypocrisy. Like I said, I came to just sit in and see if any of my words were taken seriously through my email or through my public comment last week. And like I said, I noticed a couple of you looked into the CDC guidelines that I brought up, took them seriously, but some of you clearly like pushing certain directives without any actual basis behind it. Just want to point that out. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Would anybody else like to address the committee?
Greg Thomas, 310 Ligon Hill Road. I'd like to echo what Dan said. From the same school committee member who exercised and stated they would impose further restrictions on people if they didn't comply with the mask mandate, was here earlier this evening without a mask on, the only one on the school committee. The hypocrisy behind that is astounding to me. How can you sit here and vote for that when you yourself are not doing it? Second, some people are following the science, I appreciate that. I am very thankful for the superintendent who's implementing a test-and-stay program that is necessary for kids to stay in school when they're in close contacts, giving parents a choice to be able to quarantine for 14 days, 10 to 14 days, or test and stay in school. It's a parent's choice, and I appreciate that. I also appreciate the science, the fact that we're only doing symptomatic testing and not pool testing, because that follows the science that symptomatic people are spreaders, asymptomatic people are very low risk for spreading of COVID. Thank you.
Would anybody else like to address the committee? Please come forward.
Rob Volpe, 20 Shady Lane. I purposely came early today because I knew what I was going to see. The same thing I saw the last meeting, but only one member this time not wearing a mask. This hypocrisy, okay? You're the medical expert. You condemned, you shamed the parents that night. And for you to sit here next to Melissa Bible and Brandon Robbins talking, they were wearing a mask, you weren't. 6:59. So in COVID happens, huh? Because that's when you put your mask on. So, protocol, part of the statement. Leadership, part of the statement. The best interest of our children, mission statement. In moving this, not being live, while this is being livestreamed to the Assistant Superintendent right now. Not one parent, other than the ones in this room, know what's going on. Hypocrisy.
Would anybody else like to address the committee? Please come forward.
Kaitlyn Volpe, 20 Shady Lane. This mandate for masks is a mandate, it is not a law. I don't understand why we cannot consider the science and realize that there is zero transmission of COVID from children in school. You guys pointed out numbers saying that there was transmission of COVID and that you had positives while it wasn't in school, it didn't happen in school. You have nothing to say to back that up. Consider what you're doing here. You're masking my little boys every single day. They can't breathe, okay? They go into school at 9 o'clock in the morning, and then they go to Creative Choice afterwards so that my husband and I can work full-time jobs, okay? So they are in a mask for flipping eight hours a day, okay? How would you like it? You get to sit at desks and not have to do that. I get to sit at my desk for eight hours a day without having to wear a mask because I'm not around people, okay? These kids shouldn't have to do that, okay? These kids shouldn't have to be masked, have their voices cut out, not be able to see their teachers, okay? My kid, my youngest son, has not had a full year of school yet because of COVID. He is in second grade. He doesn't even know what a full year of school yet. He has no idea what his teacher looks like, okay? Because she's not allowed to pull her mask down. The only mask breaks they get is recess. Okay? It disgusts me. I can't even compose myself right now. It disgusts me that all of you sitting here have not read the actual science.
Would anybody else like to address the committee? Please step forward. Again, would anybody like to address the committee? Please come forward. And for the last and final time, if anybody else would like to address the committee, please come forward, state your name and address for the record, please. Having no one come forward, we're going to close the open forum portion of our meeting, and we're going to move on to Communications Superintendent. There are no communications this evening, okay? I'm going to move right into the Superintendent report.
Before we get started, we had some very unfortunate news this morning that we lost a very valued member of our faculty, Patrick Foley. Besides being a wonderful special education teacher, dad, father, he has succumbed to his ailment, and we have been notified, and he will be lost, and I hope he's in everybody's thoughts and prayers this evening. It's been a long battle for him. So I'd like to take a moment of silence for Patrick Foley.
Can we add somebody else? I believe Melissa knew of another...
We have the loss of a former junior varsity coach, Kevin Allen, over the weekend as well.
So if we can just add that person to our thoughts and prayers, please.
Thank you. So as you know, school, today was day 14, already time is flying. I thought it was funny in the message this weekend that snow would be flying, and then I said that probably wasn't okay. But time is going very quickly, and we are moving as fast as we can. Last week, we had many open houses, thanking those that were able to attend. This week, we have another set. We have Johnny Appleseed conducting grades three through five on Tuesday, September 21st. We have both our middle schools on Wednesday, the 23rd, from 5:30 to 7:30. And LHS and CTI on the 23rd... Oh, I'm sorry, the middle schools are the 22nd. The high school is the 23rd, from 6 to 8. This is a great opportunity for you to walk the school, meet the teacher, and actually meet some new families and students. So take the time, come out, meet people. It's a wonderful, wonderful opportunity. We also have the JA Festival. I've been trying to promote that because that's another environment for our students and our families. Many of our students will be there, in booths, staff will be there. So come out as a community to really support what's happening. Students love to see a full entourage there. So if you can, let's just pray that it's great weather as well. We also, as you noticed, I put in the message, and I felt a little cheeky about it, but I truly mean, if there's anyone in the community that has ever thought about, you know, maybe taking an opportunity to work in the schools in some capacity, every one of our units right now, we are hiring for. From secretaries to paras and tutors and teachers, and we won't even talk about the bus company. We're really working hard to get that rectified, so...
We don't have also our food service needs.
Our food service. Bob Burr, our manager, has been making the pizzas for the entire city. He's doing a great job, but he has stopped delivering because he's so busy. So if there's somebody out there that really would like to have the opportunity try working in the school department, just call our HR or go onto our website, and you will see there is a big green button that says "jobs", and you can just apply there. So it'd be nice to bring more of the community in. The biggest piece that I've had to talk to parents quite a bit is the test-and-stay program. There's nobody more excited than me about getting this in. Kathy Gardette has done a wonderful job enlisting the help of practitioners from the state that are actually going to be in our schools that can apply the test-and-stay. The test-and-stay is for people who are just... Maybe you have two of the minor symptoms. Right now, it's allergy season. So our students and staff are sniffling and sneezing, maybe coughing, but allergies, I mean, it's New England. So we could give them a quick test in order for them to stay. But until that's in place, we are in the traditional mode that we have to send students home, and that causes an interruption, which we know. And we're working with staff right now that if a child has to be sent home, who is going to support their learning? Because we want to make sure that we don't lose any more time. So we're enlisting the help of other teachers to stay in contact with families, get our Google Classrooms up, whatever it's going to take. So the test-and-stay, we look strong for October 1st. The staffing should be in place. In conjunction with that, Kathy has also organized mobile vaccination clinics for anybody that would like them. This is for anyone, anyone, 12 years and up. So at Sam Sett, Thursday, September 23rd, from 3 to 6, there will be a mobile vaccine van there. They come back on October 14th for your second shot. Skyview Middle School, Thursday, September 30th and the 21st, from 3 to 6, first and second shot. And then Lemmonster High School, Thursday, October 7th and the 28th, the same thing. So even if it's not for you, if anyone in the community could put that communication out to get our community up to or close to this 80%, so we could unmask and stay safe. Currently, we're sitting just around the 60% mark between staff and students. So whatever it takes, we're going to keep pushing, and hopefully, we can provide for everybody in the community. So feel free to tell anybody and everybody that you know.
And I'm just going to reiterate, even though you said it eloquently, that it really does not necessarily... It can be for anybody, you don't have to be part of the school district or community. It's just anybody, you don't have to...
Anybody, anybody. So this is a really great channel that we can get that message. And it's free. So please take us up on it. Kathy has worked very hard trying to make sure that we're providing everything for the community.
Has that information gone out in other languages as well?
It has, it has. And then tonight, we'll talk about that as well with the LPAC.
Perfect.
Okay, thank you.
All right, that's it?
Yes.
Okay. So what I'd like to do, if we do the LPAC, but we do have someone here around the land transfer, Judy Sumner, so I would like to bring that up after LPAC, if people are fine with that.
You guys okay with that?
And Dean is going to be late and has requested, or may not make it, and has requested that we move the voting twice proposal to a time when he's here. So that might make more sense to push that to our next meeting to ensure that he's there. That's the will of the committee.
Great.
All right, so we'll do LPAC first?
Okay. This is such a unique group. I just... So the LPAC stands for English Learning Learner Parent Advisory Council. We always have a CPAC, we now have an LPAC. This group, led by the... Really, they have grown best themselves, keeping us on track. Their meetings and their agendas have been outstanding, and they are wonderfully thoughtful to our families. So Tatiana?
All right, I just wanted to introduce Tatiana. She has taken on the job of our LPAC chair, and she's worked hand-in-hand with me around this piece for the last two years anyways, as we started it when I first came around. And I don't want it to go unsaid that. She's also been chosen for our statewide LPAC team from DESI. So it's a big accomplishment. And I'm going to turn it right over to Tatiana, but I'm going to hand out some of the things for her, and her team's going to come up and get introduced.
Good evening, everyone.
I don't know if that's on.
I don't know, can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Well, thank you, Renee, for that introduction. It's more, it's a pleasure to be here tonight and to officially, you know, present the LPAC members. As Renee mentioned, we've been working for a little bit over two years. And she's handing out...
See, I don't think it's on.
If it's on, just bring it a little closer to you.
Okay. Is that better?
Yeah.
I feel like I'm a rising god. Can you hear me now? All right, can you hear me now? Is this better? Wonderful.
Use your mother voice.
Use my mother voice? Okay, I can do that. So we're excited. Renee just handed out some of the little brief descriptions that I have for all the LPAC members. They are a little shy, so they might not come up here to talk, but I can certainly have them come up, stand up, and at least wave to everybody, if that's okay. But I just wanted to talk to you a little bit about myself. So I've been a Lemmonster resident for the past 20 years. My family is originally from Puerto Rico. And my mother, growing up, instilled in me, and I'm so thankful for that, to speak Spanish. Our native language is Spanish. So it was really important for our family to continue that legacy. So my husband is from Mexico, so our primary language in the household is Spanish. We do have four beautiful children. Two of them are... Our eldest daughters are twins. They're seven, and they're students at Francis Drake Elementary. They're in second grade, and they love every minute. And my two little ones are at home still. I have a little boy who's two and a half and a little baby girl who's almost one. So they're all loves. But when the opportunity came around, when my girls started kindergarten, I immediately connected with the parent liaison for Francis Drake, Gloria Morales, who's a great asset to our community. And Francis Drake had been doing some type of parent support groups for the, you know, different linguistic background families at the time at the school. And from that point on, I heard about that there was an opportunity, and we got to meet Superintendent at one of the initial meetings at the Spanish-American Center. And we kind of got a little bit more information about what LPAC is and the intent and the benefit of it. So it was really appealing to me because I can see, working in the community for many years as well, I'm a social worker, and I work with individuals with disabilities. So I have seen an array of need when you're talking about language barrier and the importance that it has to have access to information in your native language. Because information is power, and for families to be able to have that for their children is essential. So the opportunity came around, and I was very eager to do it and do the best I can to the ability that I can. It's a work in progress. We were going to... We had many things lined up to do, and then COVID hit. So a lot of things got, obviously, as everyone, postponed. But we've discovered throughout the last year with remote learning and everything, even though there was challenges all around for everybody, but it was a good opportunity for us to see what we could do virtually with families. And we do family meetings. We do every two months for the school year. We do family LPAC meetings, where we have parents from all the districts to come and join in, and we have different topics, different guest speakers. Things that interest or need of our community, and we kind of try to provide that information to them, both in Spanish and Portuguese. Those are the populations that are higher in our district. So even though LPAC can certainly assist other families from other ethnic backgrounds, because we do have, obviously, a mix in our community, but the majority of the families that we are working with currently are Spanish-speaking and Portuguese-speaking. And one of the things, before I introduce the council members, is that I want to let you know is, we work collaboratively with the Superintendent, with the Director Renee, and the parent liaisons. I can't emphasize enough how much the parent liaisons are an asset to our community, what they do for the families and the students. We are always advocating for more liaisons. We have, the majority of them, as you know, are Spanish-speaking. We're in dire need of more Portuguese-speaking liaisons. So I was very happy when Superintendent sent that email out asking about, you know, if anybody is interested in jobs and reaching out to other individuals from different backgrounds. That is going to be huge help, because there's a lot of our schools who are lacking, unfortunately, that don't have that linguistic ability to assist the students and families. So it's just nice to have an array and have that available when needed. So speaking of wonderful people and who can speak Portuguese, our co-chairs, Alessandra Silva. Do you want to come up? She is originally from Brazil. She's been living in Lemmonster for quite some time. She has three daughters, excuse me, in the district. She has one in the fifth grade at Francis Drake. She has an eighth grader at Skyview. And she also has a 10th grader at the Lemmonster High School. She also works for the district. She's in the Parent Information Center, and she's an amazing support for translating documentation, assisting families in Portuguese. So I am very honored to have her part of our LPAC. Thank you, Alessandra. Our secretary is Johani Saldana. She is originally from Dominican Republic. She's been in Lemmonster residence since 2019. She has two daughters who attend Francis Drake Elementary, one in the third grade and the other in the fifth grade, and are also part of the ELA program. Thank you, Johani. She's very eager to collaborate with us. We have an Assistant Secretary, Anna Kelly Stival, who unfortunately was not able to be here tonight due to her employment. She had work. So she sends her regards and apologizes for not being able to assist. But just so you know a little bit about her, she's also from Brazil. She speaks Portuguese. She's learning English. She's eager to learn more English, so hopefully, she'll continue to do that. She has three daughters in the Lemmonster School District as well. She has a senior in high school, a sophomore, and a sixth grader at Sam Sett. So they're also part of the ELA program as well. We have our treasurer, Andrea Marrero. Andrea is originally from Uruguay, Central America, and she resides here in Lemmonster since October 2000. She has two children. Her daughter attends Skyview Middle School. She's in the seventh grade. And her son attends Lemmonster High School. He is a senior. And they have both graduated from the ELA program. They've done really successfully, so that's really nice to see. And we appreciate everything she does for us as well. Juan Carlos de los Santos is our Assistant Treasurer. He is also originally from Dominican Republic, and he resides here in Lemmonster since 2019 as well. His two daughters attend Francis Drake Elementary. One's in third grade and one's in fifth grade, and also part of the ELA program. And if you haven't figured it out, Juan Carlos and Johani are married. But they're a lovely couple. Juan Carlos does not speak English, and he was a little bit shy at first to engage in the LPAC. And we reassured him that if he has the desire to do it, that we would certainly help and facilitate the best way we can. That's what it's about. That's about encouraging parents, getting them involved, seeing how we can help them, providing those resources to help them through the process. So I'm really happy to have them as part of our team. So that's the LPAC Council. And we usually meet once a month to kind of plan our family meetings. We have, on a regular basis, we've scheduled, we planned an initial meeting with the Superintendent and the EL Director as well. So we plan out the year. Throughout the school year, we try to have three meetings with the Superintendent just to review what we're doing, review any specific needs or cares or concerns that the district, the families have voiced to us, so that we could share that with the district. And we also establish two annual meetings, biannuals, fall and spring, with the parent liaisons of all the schools. And the reason we do that is because we enjoy collaborating with them. And the way we've always said it, they really are that bridge between students and families. And as we're getting to grow and we're getting to engage more families to be part of LPAC, to really know what we're about, what our focuses are, they really help bridge that gap. So communicating and constant sharing information and resources is really helpful to make things moving forward. But we appreciate the support that we've gotten from the district and everybody within the schools. As you can tell, we have within the Council quite a mix of all of our schools. We may not have every single school represented. Hopefully, at some point, we hope to have that. But I think we have a good mix. I think we have a good mix of representation from the elementary level all the way up to the high school level. We have students who are in the EL program and students who have already graduated. So it's nice to get that perspective. For this school year, last year, everything was all remote. All of our family meetings were remote. This year, the majority of them will be remote as well. We're trying, hopefully, if all goes well, to do two meetings in person at the library. And our first meeting will be in November, in-person meeting, will be November 18th. And our hope is, we are trying to reach out to the schools and the liaisons to gather a panel of discussion from students. We would like to have a student from the elementary level, middle school, and high school, and have them share their experience being an EL student and kind of get a feel of how they're going through the process, becoming an EL student, and those who have already graduated. So we're excited for that, because that'll be a nice way to intermingle with the families, you know, obviously following all the COVID protocols and safety measures. But we really haven't seen families face-to-face in over two years. It's been tough. But I do know from the feedback that we've gotten from families that they really enjoy the virtual meetings, because childcare, transportation, travel time, whatnot, it is very more convenient for the families. We have established a Facebook page. So if you look at facebook/lpac, LPAC Lemmonster is our page. And we try to post everything there, English, Spanish, and Portuguese. So whenever Superintendent Deacon sends something, I always copy and paste it into that page, because it's a way to get more families' information out there. I feel like the more information we can throw, you know, at them and bombard them sometimes, they see it frequently, they're like, oh, this is important, let me take a second look at it. So we are working really hard with that. And we're also working with the district regarding, on the district website, we do have a section for LPAC that we're in the process of updating with our information and the different minutes from our meetings and upcoming flyers and all of that. So we're working on that as well. Our first meeting is coming up now at the end of the month, our first virtual meeting, September 30th. And we're looking forward to having more families join. The open houses was really nice, because we actually had flyers done, and all the liaisons were able to distribute them to families during open houses. So we're trying to get the word out as best we can. And Superintendent, excuse me, Deacon, has been very supportive when we do have an upcoming meeting in her Sunday message. I'll ask her, can you send a little blurb, a little reminder? And she's always willing to do that, and everybody receives those reminders as well. So we hope in the future to be able to provide some other different types of support for our families. One of the areas that we see are in need is some of the parents have the desire to learn English. So we're trying to reach out in the community where we can connect them to get, you know, learn English, basic English classes. I know some places may have them for free, some at low cost. I know some places may have them for free, some at low cost, depending what it is, but we're trying to provide that. And then at the same time, figuring out ways and trying to recruit and help recruit more Spanish-speaking, Portuguese-speaking staff for the district, to help our, you know, our growing numbers that we have for, for students in our population. But we hope to be an asset to the families, to the students, and the best way we can. And, you know, we're, we're here for them. Like we've said in our meetings, we each have a child, at least one child in the district, that we always care for our own, of course, but we go above that. We, we don't only care about our own children, we care about all the students. How can we best support them? Are parents really getting the information? Do they have the access to it? How can we simplify things for them? Families get overwhelmed, and when you add the language barrier, it's even more of a challenge. So whenever we can simplify things to them, it ultimately will be a good, good result. I know I spoke a lot of information at once. I didn't know if anybody had any questions, or...
You can see about the state poll. Yes, exactly. We're very proud of that.
Thank you. Thank you.
Does anybody have any questions? I mean, you guys do amazing work, and we really appreciate it.
Yeah, I just had one. I know at one point, when LPAC was first forming, there was a hope to kind of bridge the LPAC and the CPAC, to help inform families of their rights or their children's rights for special ed. I didn't know if that was something you guys were able to work on. Yes, thank you for bringing that up, because we actually did last year, we did, we did a couple of meetings jointly with CPAC. I have connected with Angela Thomas, who's the CPAC chair, and we've shared resources and ideas and whatnot, and she's joined one of our meetings as well. So we have done that, and we hope to do one of our, again, this year, another family meeting, you know, together, so that we, for the same reason, because we do have dual needs. We have families who are special needs and families who also have the language need. So yes, definitely, thank you for pointing that out. It is very important for us to do as well.
Does anybody else have any questions? Thank you. And you, everybody who came with.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
We appreciate all your hard work.
Thank you. And I'm, and I'm very honored to be president of Leamester at the LPAC statewide, starting meetings. So that'll be, that'll be an interesting perspective, because we'll get to meet with other LPAC chairs, other professors, and different people within DESI, so I'm hoping that we can multiply and share the, share the good news, you know, with, with everybody.
Very impressive.
Oh, thank you, thank you. I'm very honored. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. And we're going to move to the Leamester appropriations, so Judy, you can come forward and introduce yourself and tell us why you're here. And she, she did just hand this out to everyone, I think she, her, wasn't it?
Hi, I'm Judith Sumner, the Director of Recreation for the City of Leamester, and thank you so much for moving me up on the agenda tonight, I appreciate that. I have another meeting to attend. I'm here this evening because I wanted to let you know that the Recreation Department received a grant and donations and city council appropriations to build a skate park and a pump track over at the Johnson Street Playground. It was the area that was once the tennis court area, and part of it was once the old playground area on Johnson Street. In doing the design, I attached a drawing of the final draft that we have, and it was brought to my attention by John Roseberry, the city engineer, that part of the land where a portion of the parking area is deeded for city, for school purposes only. The rest of the property is not restricted in the deed for school purposes only, it's only deeded to the city, so it can be used for recreation. But that section, there was a paper street at one point in time, and I attached with that, the map on the next page, it shows where that paper street was. And that was, and the paper street is approximately 50 feet wide. And that section was, I attached the deed to that, and it states that it was for school purposes only. So the dilemma that we have is, do we continue with the parking area where it is and expand it along the road? And that's where the original plan was to do that. The DPW had stated that it's not safe, and other parents and people on our skate park committee felt that it wasn't safe for the cars to pull out into traffic onto Johnson Street. They'd have to back out of traffic, and if children are getting out of the car, they might run into the road. So it was proposed that we move the parking area to the right side along the handicapped accessible sidewalk, but the second portion, the right portion of the parking lot, is on that paper street area that's only for school purposes only. And part of the parking, existing parking area is on school property also. We had the, that was at one time a playground, and part of the handicap ramp that went to the previous playground there, it was also on school property. So the request is to have the school committee turn that parcel over to the Recreation Department and for it to be used for recreation purposes. And that's a, and also to, I included, you know, all the contours, a part of that land that's part of the school property is wetlands as well. So I'm working with engineers to determine whether or not we will even put parking on that second area, or we will just put a rain garden in there, because we'd have to put in drainage, and that may, may entail a higher expense. So we don't have that final parking lot planned yet, so that's what we're looking for right now, is whether we put in a paved area or put in a rain garden. We, you know, need to have your permission to do that, or turn the land over to the Recreation Department.
Can I get some more questions? So could you just help us, you held up what we all have, so people, I, I've gone through this, and I'm like, okay. This last page looks like a schematic of it, is that...
Yes, so this is what presently, the part that I have listed on here with, it's all red, outlining the proposed area, and if you look, the area is, that goes onto the street is where the existing fence is, where the old playground was. So that was my proposed area in our proposal first to develop the land for a skate park. So that if we are to move the parking area, we will have to use part of our proposed area that says new, where the old playground was, and part of bringing it to where the existing fence line is. We wouldn't go beyond the fence line, because it drops off and it's all, it's a drop-off there. If you look, I also included the map of all the contours to show you the grades also, so you can see where the grades are. And there is a, I, I didn't check with the engineer, but there is, in the corner, there's a little mark that says fence, and it's just a square, I mean, it's a rectangle, right there, where the fence would be. And that, that may be a boundary line, right where that would be, where it comes to a point. I didn't check with the engineer if that was the boundary line where that fence is. So it would be 50 feet from there.
So can I just clarify, so this is what the final design would look like, assuming you, you can do the two sets of parking?
Right, so that's the final design, but whether or not we do that parking lot, that's not final yet.
Right.
So this is, it's a skate park and a pump track. So all the area that you see off, that's flat, that goes up and down, curves, that's called a pump track, that people skateboard on that, they use pump, you know, use bikes and scooters and things of that nature. It opened it up to more usage by adding that on. And there's also a handicapped accessible sidewalk that comes from, from the sidewalk where the existing crosswalk is on the road on Johnson Street, and goes up to, there shows a shade structure, goes there, that's a viewing area or a sitting area, and, and it extends over towards the basketball court, so that it would be wheelchair accessible for anyone coming up if they wanted to view a basketball activity, or pump track activity, or a skate park activity.
Does anybody have some more questions for Judy? All right, thank you very much, we appreciate all your information.
Okay, thank you.
And the LPAC was very detailed. Discussion from the community and use of this land. We want to entertain a vote or put it on for further discussion, but I'd rather us talk about it first, to get a sense of what people are feeling about a skateboard park. And this is land that we have not utilized, it looks like it's been deeded to us in 1942, and it's sat there.
From the pictures, it looks like there's like no chance of ever using it anyways.
Right, just the way it's, where it's situated, with the wetlands.
Is it potentially to increase safety in that area for kids?
And provide some appropriate activity for our citizens, and particularly our youth, I would imagine.
But the insurance would be paid for by the city, correct?
It would be their property, if we deeded back to them, yes.
So there'd be no opportunity for the school to have any liability if something ever happened.
And I imagine if we were going to have to sort of compare it, because the park is no longer there, so I assume there will eventually be some maintenance that if we keep it, we will be responsible for.
There is, there used to be a playground there, and then they put the old skateboard park sort of in that place, and now they reinvented it again.
Doing the deed research, the lawyers had stated that the land where the basketball court is and, you know, the old tennis court area, the old playground area was, is city property and not deeded, there's no deed restriction on that, it's not restricted for recreation, and it's not restricted for school purposes only. As part of the grant, the area that is in red was filed with the Registry of Deeds, and that is, is for recreation purposes only now, in the deed.
So in this picture, the school properties have...
Correct, yeah, there is a map, there is another map that shows you where the school is.
That's why I looked it apart, because they are right angles to each other, so they have a hard time.
Yes, yep, the, the school is right up above.
So this picture is, it's here now?
No, it's, no, school's on the opposite side. There's a, this map right here, the second map, the second map shows you the school structure.
That's what I mean, the school property that was tied up.
Oh, the school property, oh, yes, I'm sorry.
It's cutting across this corner in this picture, which is part of this park.
Correct.
I just want to make sure I was going in correctly.
Oh, I'm sorry, yeah, right.
It's ground side here. So the school department has no... It's like a better use of the property than just leaving it sitting there with deeds, so...
But someone needs to make a motion?
So...
So that we would deed the land over to the city, with the intention of it being used to build or augment the skateboard park.
I would second that.
Can I just clarify, are we deeding the portion that is needed, or this whole yellow strip?
It would be, it would be the deed of that parcel, that strip of land. It's not a whole, it's not, it's, it's the first deed.
The red thing, so right now?
Not the red part, no, not the red part, the part that was a street.
So we're talking about deeding over this entire, the whole strip?
Yes.
All right, do you have a motion in the second? Any further discussion? All right, all those in favor? Yeah? All those opposed, motion carries. Congratulations, you're now the proud owner of a strip of land.
Thank you.
All right, we're going to then bump back to our agenda and do summer school wrap-up.
Renee?
I'm just going to kind of go summarize of what happened during our summer school programming. I just want to say that we served over 1,360 students over the summer school time of six weeks with Leamester Public Schools. If you get the handout, I kind of broke it down on each piece, but every one of our schools except for, I think, one or two were in operation this summer. We had enrichment summer academies for K through five at two different schools, at Fallbrook and Johnny Appleseed, and we broke it down in two, three, two week, I mean, two sessions for three weeks each, because we had so many students sign up, and our staff was limited. We also did the six through 12 credit recovery at the high school. We had enrichment opportunities, CTI summer camp ran also this summer, and then we had one-week camps for art, STEM, robotics, and drama for grades six through 12 that were highly attended. Our special ed summer school programs from preschool was held at Sammasette, K through five is at Francis Drake, and six through 12 was at the high school. Creative Choices also ran their summer camp program for seven weeks, and that was held at Priest. So again, the, I'm not going to read all the coordinators, but I listed all the coordinators that were involved and kept those summer schools going for the five to six weeks, depending on who ran where. It's a huge thing, a big shout-out to our staff. Our staff, we had a lot of student opportunity to participate, students signed up with the parents, and the parents were really good about making sure they were there each day, and our staff was there each day, and that was huge for our kids. I think that the big thing was, if you look at some of our numbers, especially at the K through five summer at Richmond Academy, the first session, it was signed up, everyone signed up. I think that people got nervous and kind of backed out a little bit, but then our second session, we basically doubled, because they were all like, let's get our students back into school, it was a great transition before school was ready to start, and we had close to 150 at each school in our K through five program. So that was a huge uptick from the first session. And you could see the goals that we worked on through our readers theater and our STEAM And those two programs both had, a huge shout-out to our partners in Pittsburgh State College, we house the reading specialists there, practicum each summer, and we had 10 reading specialists this year. So we had five at each building that gave one-on-one and small instruction to all our students, did the weekly assessments and kept them going and progress monitoring, and some of our students were loving that one-on-one attention, as you guys know, just to be able to go off. But our, that's K through five summer enrichment was really about just getting kids back into the groove, getting kids reading, fluency was a huge important piece of this, and engaging and collaborating with each other. And that was, I have a little small clip that I'll show you. We did have kids coming to present at school committee the last couple times, but whereas canceled, we, we had to just kind of go to our, our standby video, but, and then, I'll, we'll do that at the end, but at the CTI, they had 38 new students come in for the summertime to participate. And then our middle school course and high school class offerings were all labeled there, and we did have a few students with the credit recovery, but it was nice, some of them did come in on an everyday basis, but some of them were able to stay at home, and we had some students from the outer... And we had some students from the outer district that was a pay-per-fee that came to us. And then we had, I broke down the numbers for the art, STEM, drama, and robotics camps. So I, I think overall, our special ed program had two-hundred-and-sixty-seven kids too for preschool through grade five and six through twelve, they had a hundred and fifty-five. So it was a well, iron machine over the, a well, oil machine over the vacation, the summer break. Those kids didn't miss a beat. I don't think our teachers missed a beat. And again, it was just very successful and it was so nice to see kids back in our buildings after, you know, last year and excited to learn and be there. But I do have a quick little video. I don't know, on the district website, you saw a lot of the postings that we had around our art and STEM. We tried to put new updated ones there. Right now, we have, this is Beth Wilson's class who's, who was supposed to come and they were gonna do the grasshopper and the ants. But they made their own scenery, they made their own masks, they performed each of the, they had a huge summer stage, as you can see. And each week, each class went out and performed for each other in the tents that we were provided. So that was there. And then, oh, thanks Steve. This is just one little thing that they did, but it was one that I couldn't go without putting in because they had so much fun and they were good at it. So I'm gonna show you this one quick little video to kind of end our summer school wrap-up. And there's the post. So that happened every day in a lot of different classrooms and they really just were able to be themselves and perform and hope with that, some of that re-influencing. So that's our summer school wrap-up.
That's great.
Any, any questions or anything, Sue?
No, the, one of the nice things we did this summer too is there's a lot of flexibility. Some of the programs were one week, some of them were two, some were three weeks, just to give families flexibility because we wanted them to have a break too and enjoy their summers. We found by the second session, they were, there was a waitlist. We want in. So it was really a nice segue in a transition to get us back into the buildings and students did have a great time.
No, and I do think that enrichments at the middle school, high school.
Really helped.
Robotics, just like they had a full vocal. Our STEM had a full class. I think the kids really, it was like one week, so it was, it wasn't taken away their whole summer, but they were engaged and happy and the activities were phenomenal.
Sue, did you have any comment?
I do.
Did we have any participation from the Western District students, the C T I?
They had two students who were coming in as freshmen to participate. It was a little, it was hard because they didn't have someone driving them. And whereas half a day, they had some issues around getting the bosses to go pick up the kids and that kind of thing. But they had two parents who kind of brought two of the kids over and kind of did a powerful between the two of them. But we did have two kids participate. But they have a full class for freshmen coming in. I think there's ten freshmen that are in. Yeah, so.
So where are we up to?
I think they're like.
We're over thirty now.
Yeah, we're over thirty. I'm, I know that. I just don't know who's gonna be accepted for the freshman class. The freshman will go through and do their thing, so.
Does anybody else have any questions?
No.
It sounds like a great success and enjoyed by everyone who participated. So thank you to all the staff and teachers and families that participated. Thank you, Renee.
Thanks. Thank you.
So we're on to data discussion and this is Ms. Laurie and Renee.
So many of you that have been here know of the assessments we do and I'll quickly just go through them again. The DIBELS, which is a fun little name, but it's the Dynamic Indicators of Basic Early Literacy Skills. That's a set of short tests that are done for the acquisition of literacy skills. That has already taken place this fall through, at every one of our elementary schools, grades.
One through five.
The kindergarten students who came in a little bit later than our elementaries will have that work done by the first week of October. That assessment has been completed. The results are already being used by our staff members, both in the general ed class and then by our interventionists and our content, our academic content support. And they do progress monitoring on this as well. So we do the test three times a year and then the students who are indicated to be at risk are monitored on a bi-weekly basis in between those, those assessments. The N W E A MAP, which is the measurement, Measures of Academic Progress, I'm sure you're familiar with that as well. It's an adaptive assessment that we've used for E L A and mathematics in grades K, grade K through nine. We've done some with ten and some with some specialized programs at the high school. That assessment is ongoing as we speak. So it does take a little bit of time in each of the classrooms at the elementary level. The students took a test last fall and then took a test again in the late spring. Those results were already given out to classroom teachers and our interventionists as well. So they have used that information to help place students into support groups and also to do grouping within their classroom. Again, the kindergartners will be starting with that at the beginning of October. We're moving into a different assessment for our sixth through ninth grade. It's called I Ready. It's the same type of an assessment as MAP in that it is adaptive. A student will start on the assessment and then based on how they are doing on questions, they will either be moved along to more difficult content or higher grade level content, or they will be, they'll stay the same or back up into something that would be more successful. And in the long run, that gives us a good idea of where the students really are. That, the teachers have been trained on that at both of the middle schools and at our high school. We're planning to begin that assessment next week.
Yep.
And we have plans for the results to be given back to the teachers the first week of October. One great thing about this as well, the capacity that the company has. They're gonna be coming in and actually providing data debriefs with our administrators and also with our teachers to really help to build data or assessment literacy among the adults, how to use that data, how to move forward with it, and to make changes to their instruction based on that. So that's something that we're excited about. Let Renee talk about the access testing that takes place every year.
So our access text, testing last year was a longer period due to COVID. So it was not until the end of May that we finished our access testing. Lemstar did a great job as getting almost nearly all our students. We had a ninety-eight percent rate of taking the test last year. The test was not allowed to be taken at home. It was only to be taken at school. So we had to make special arrangements, get students in that were staying remote on days that there might not have been kids in the building, that kind of thing. So, and those tests have been given to us and they are being given back to their parents with the assessment and their placement for this year by the end of this month. They also received their student results, the teachers, the ELL teachers. And it comes with a plan. If their students made their growth, then they keep working at that. If their students didn't make their necessary growth, then the teachers are responsible to make student individual improvement plans. And they'll be developed by the end of this month and put into, into play starting October first and that'll be revisited every quarter. And this year, they're going back to access testing in January for the one month.
So last year, we had come to you requesting funds for a middle school math program that is now in place. There's a screener and a diagnostic that goes along with that that has been given to all of our students at both of the middle schools. The results of that are immediately available to the teachers and we've had training for the teachers. It's continued through this year and will continue on so that program is in place. The elementary level, we have updated our E L A curriculum product to the new version of Wonders. And one of the things going forward this year is Renee has worked to have formative assessments throughout the year. So we have chosen some benchmark assessments from both the Wonders program and the Envisions math program that all of our students will take and then the teachers will analyze that. So this will be a great formative assessment moving forward throughout the year. We're excited to have that. M-CAS results will be made public tomorrow. So they're, they'll be out tomorrow. We have had those results in the, in the schools. The administrators in the schools have been reviewing them along with us at the district level. They are allowed to be used to make decisions about instruction, scheduling for students and such. So at the high school level especially, where there is still a competency determination for, through the ninth grade science and through the tenth grade E L A and mathematics, they've been working to schedule students that might need some supports, that may be at risk for not having passed or received their competency determination. And again, moving forward tomorrow, those results will be in the buildings and will be going home to parents. There's a lot of really good work and we thank our teachers for sticking with us in all this. They've been working very, very hard to get a good picture of where the children are and where they need to move them. We're moving down what we're calling an acceleration roadmap. Doesn't mean that we're going faster. What it means is we're gonna be on grade level and then based on the results of these assessments and also what the teachers do in their classroom, they're gonna be providing just-in-time supports to keep those children on grade level while filling in some of the gaps that we know may have been there, so. Again, big shout out to the teachers who are working hard at this already.
Renee, I presume that probably our next meeting will have sort of a summary of the M-CAS results for.
Yes.
It's invaluable until tomorrow. Sue? So this is great. We have all these measurements and assessments, but what are we doing for their mental health? The students that are, you know, challenged during these difficult times? I mean.
Yes.
Can you speak?
Well, and we have, we've implemented a program called Second Step, which is an S E L program in our elementaries and our middle schools. So that is a curriculum in support of students' social, emotional, and mental health. It's being delivered by our guidance staff and also adjustment counselors as well as classroom teachers. So that is in place. We'd started it at the elementary level, but we're actually very happy to say that we're bringing it into the middle school. The children who've had it in elementary will recognize it and the routines and the protocols that go along with that. So that's in place as well. We have a full, I believe, and I'll look to Kim, we have a full complement of our guidance counselors and our adjustment counselors in place at all of our buildings to support the children as their needs arise.
Our Student Support Center, which is our program that supports students with social, emotional, we've been working with Walker School. We're contracting them for the year to come and be on-site in our schools, do some coaching, do some support to staff. They're also gonna be available to us for debriefing when we have a crisis situation that happens. So we've really put some layers in. We started working with them last year at the end of the school year and we've put some protocols in place and the, the teachers themselves and the staff and the parent professionals were all part of that, have made some, have some input into how that's gonna unfold. So we feel like it's gonna be very powerful.
I just think it's important to make sure that piece is integrated with the academic piece because if they're not together, you know, obviously the whole child is what we're, you know, hoping to educate.
Thank you, Suzanne.
We need their needs, so.
Does anybody else have any questions? Mike, then Melissa.
Yeah, I have a few questions. The, the access test is, what is that a test of? It says you give it to the English language learners. Is it an assessment of their acquisition of English?
Yes.
Okay. So then the other tests, are they available in other languages?
Yes.
So MAP and I Ready and the middle school math?
Yep, they're taken in Spanish. The ability for our Level Ones are included in Spanish. Portuguese is hopefully coming out. We haven't finalized that yet. But right now, the Spanish are able to take that test and they do take it if they're a Level One Spanish student. And MAP has it and so does an I Ready. And our Envisions, they all have it.
So, for each of those, the Spanish, the only other option. So a Portuguese-speaking student is currently having their math assessed in English?
We don't, if we don't feel like that they're able to do it, we don't provide them that math testing. We wait until next, until, until they're testing when they have a little bit more English. But a lot of them wanna try it, especially in the Portuguese. So we give them that option, but it's not, like I said, it's not, we basically just wanna see what their skills are if they do it. We don't, it's not something that we look at closely enough until we can get an actual read on them.
Wherever possible, we are using Google Translate and other translate services. So there are options for us, even if the companies or the publishers don't have that as well-built out as they do for Spanish. But we do have, it's amazing how facile our students are with Google Translate.
Melissa?
I was just wondering if there was any sort of like anecdotal information you could give us about the testing as you're seeing it right now, especially the DIBELS with the younger kids?
I, I will say that we, we sat in on some work with the, from the Department of Education, the M-CAS.
Yep.
And we've been looking at trends across the country. The two areas that, the two content areas that seem to be most at risk are mathematics and also writing. So the, the component of writing within our broader E L A program. And the, the grade levels that seem to have been impacted the most by having remote learning are K one and two. I don't think that's a surprise for any of us. It was difficult for them and really depended upon the supports that they may have had at home as they were trying to access remote learning.
And then the next part of that is, in some ways, parent-teacher meetings will be here before we do it. But at the same time, as we're trying to catch kids up as quickly as we can, how is that information being given out to parents so they can, you know, work on what are seen as extra struggles up until then?
So in the elementary level, that, like I know, DIBELS just had been completed. So they are trying to look at that data and see what the best strategies are to help those students. That they have progress reports going home in another couple of weeks. It's halfway point. And they usually send home some suggestions and, and obviously some materials around helping with the fluency in that piece. But I think that the biggest, I think just getting us in the next, you know, three to four weeks, getting all these assessments done and having a big idea, a better idea. I think that's gonna be the report card time that they'll have some things in place and things to give kids, the materials back to parents to help with that.
Anybody else? Great, thank you ladies for speaking on the information.
Thank you.
Congressman, for all the steps and ministry and family, so our next meeting will be M-CAS. So.
We can do a day, a data, data update, yes.
And then you're moving the voting of the policy, change discussions.
Okay.
So we're doing approval of the minutes. Ren?
I'll make a motion for approval of minutes from August sixteenth.
All right, does anybody, do I have a second?
I'll second.
All right. We have a motion in a second. Any emissions error?
Any omissions, errors, corrections to those minutes? All right, having none, all those in favor? Anybody opposed? Motion carries. Now we have the executive session minutes. Just, were they in the packet? I don't actually see them right here.
It was a separate email.
Oh, the separate email, sorry.
But there was only one that I saw, right?
No, there were three.
There was two. It was in one email. April 5th, May 3rd, and May 11th.
So where were all the others?
Well, so at this point, those are the ones before us to see if we want to release. Does anybody have any issues with releasing those?
There were a lot of typos and stuff, I mean.
All right, so why don't we, so since at this point, the general feeling is that we are willing to release them, why don't we have them in our packet for the next meeting? And then we can talk about the corrections, omissions, and errors specifically and vote on them? Does that sound appropriate to everyone?
Yes.
Well, would it be appropriate then, before we get them, to get the documentation of, you know, we talk about raises, stations, and all that stuff. Couldn't we get the quantity of summary report of what was voted on in these?
So.
I know we were all given different, you know, we were all given initial versions.
Right.
But we don't have actual ones. And we have talked about this, so.
So I guess two things. One is we were given them in our packet previously for the, before the meeting. And we use those to make our votes on. The minutes are generally an overview and not the details. So that would not be in the minutes.
Right, but again, I'm not looking for detail. I'm looking at when you make a motion and you vote on something on a financial impact, you should have a total dollar amount of that impact. So here's one. A motion was made to offer a 2% stipend to Secretary's Parrot totaling how much? That's it. I mean, that's really what your motion should be. You should have quantitative numbers referenced in it.
So I think we had, we had the numbers in front of us at the time of voting, which was in our packet at that time. And I don't think anybody put the numbers in specifically during the vote.
We never had a document that was accurate. And that's all I'm asking for, is what's the document that we all approved? Or what's the total dollar amount we all approved for all the detail in these minutes? So that we can reference them into a budget. I mean, I don't think I'm asking for much, but so I guess, I mean, I know you and I talked and I thought that we had gotten that during the packet, but.
Ultimately, we have to vote on these things in an open session.
Right.
So the vote should be in an open session. And I think those numbers are in those packets. I think we could look them up.
Right.
So maybe we can ask.
We can re-release them with the minutes.
In executive session, I mean, I can bring what I have and we all have different numbers. And all I asked was that we have one document representing what the votes were. That's all I asked for. And again, I think it's shameful that we vote on financial things without having to, it's like, we just voted on a budget blindly without putting a number.
We did have the numbers. We knew what we were voting on. The only hard number that we did not know was when we were talking about the administration. We were given.
I'm pretty sure.
But we have the number because we voted on the actual number when you came back into regular session.
I'm pretty sure in the minutes too, we referenced the, like the specific, like list that we're referring to. From this line to this line, which had the total that was.
So maybe we can just get from the minutes, get.
They're not, I mean, I'm going through it. There's nothing.
We'll get a report sometime about the actual numbers that came out of that.
Sure, Mel's, Mel's worked on that.
Okay, so we'll get that.
Right, I mean, again, I think, you know, it's our responsibility to, if we're going to put together and vote on financial transactions, we need to have numbers because.
Right, but I, but I do want to say that we had numbers. Nobody voted without numbers.
Right, well.
At the meeting. And I know you weren't at the meeting, but we did have numbers.
I was at the meeting. I will bring in all the notes that I have. And you know what? If those are the actual numbers, which I know they weren't, so be it. But I think, and, and I think they should be reflected in the minutes.
And if I, if I can just add to it, I think part of the problem, one of the meetings had gotten split. So some of us had the information from the first meeting. And then, right, so a couple of people were missing the original packets. That included some of those numbers, I believe. But most of us had everything. I think it was just a communication issue because, you know, one of the sheets was missing for those folks who weren't at the original, the original part of that meeting.
The first meeting and not redistributed.
Right, correct. But Melanie will be able to provide that for us for our next meeting.
Certainly provide the end results.
End results, yeah. Perfect, thank you. All right, policy, I'm sorry, we're moving into subcommittee reports, the finance subcommittee?
Finance subcommittee met tonight. We reviewed warrants. We have a stack of them to approve. We began discussion on the revised budget for the current fiscal year. Now that we have our actual appropriation numbers and have an idea what actual enrollment is. So there will, we have further work to do on that, so we will have another meeting. Our protocol calls for us to approve the revised budget in October. So we have a little bit of time to get this done, and I'm confident we will. Would you like me to do the warrants now or save them?
Yes, please.
So we have two and a half meetings worth of minutes, of warrants to cover. So we'll see if we can make it through all of these. From the general fund, we have warrant number one totaling $137,676.6. Warrant number two totaling $0.00 because on warrant number two, everything was grants revolving. Warrant number three totaling $277,798.80. Warrant number four totaling $69,420.56. Warrant number five totaling $469,247.93. Warrant number six totaling $60,407.87. Warrant number seven totaling $506,277.67. Warrant number eight totaling $75,395.59. Warrant number nine totaling $1,823,570.79. Warrant 10 totaling $217,850.95. From grants and revolving, we have warrant number one totaling $259,715.56. Warrant number two totaling $73,757.73. Warrant number three totaling $703,191.75. Warrant number four totaling $659,096.80. Warrant number five totaling $277,341.47. Warrant number six totaling $14,575.56. Warrant number seven, $179,549.95. Warrant number eight totaling $96,208.70. Warrant number nine totaling $466,718.10. And warrant number 10 totaling $20,546.53. Finance subcommittee has reviewed these and unanimously recommends that we approve them. So I make a motion that we approve the warrants as ready.
I have a second. Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion found that? All right, all those in favor? Anybody opposed? Motion carries. We'll move on to the policy subcommittee.
Policy committee, we started off as student representatives on the school committee. And we decided that the committee itself has three representatives from the school.
So we have one representative from the high school, one representative from CTEI, one from LCE to be elected from those specific student bodies.
And if the principal, you know, perhaps some guidance from the principals too, perhaps. But this is all for a discussion.
So what we had, had voted on was to, to do that, but this would just to let folks know that we would actually be developing a policy.
Right.
And we'll bring that policy back, which would need to be voted on twice for the whole committee. And we had talked about having it proctored by a school committee member. And I had volunteered, Brandon.
You were voluntold. Yeah, we call that voluntold. He gets that a lot lately.
That, you know, that he would work and mentor folks and that they would rotate through. So each of those members would, you know, sit at a meeting and bring back, you know, any, you know, issues or, you know, feedback from the student body regarding our agendas. But we would not be allowing students participate in that executive session.
So did we show this to the students, the proposal, and say, what do you think of it? Because they proposed it, right?
We're going to develop a formal policy and then we'll.
Because we don't want to ruin for people saying, hey, why don't you come back to us and consult us? Okay, that's fine.
So yeah, we've got to do the details, but that's the bad jokes.
The other thing was we reviewed the handbook and we're sending it back to Chris and or Paula. Because there was some.
Well, we're not sending it back to them. We're requesting that the principal.
The principal to look at them because there was some question about.
Because it was unclear whether some of the things were added or deletions. And we want to make sure that the numbers and things are correct before we vote on it. So we'll be tabling that. And then we have one more.
The new old business.
No, the fees.
Oh, yeah, that's right, yeah. The fees, the student, the student fees, student activity fees, we decided to put it in advance for a year.
So net costs?
Nobody, none, none of the, you can, you can jump in anytime you want. None, none of the school athletics will have to pay anything.
So, right.
For one year at least, and we'll revisit it in April.
To utilize the ESSR funds to pay for all the club fees and all the athletic fees. And we would not be charging busing fees again this year.
And the monies that have already been paid will given back to the families. Am I right or wrong?
So that those are just for the athletic fees, the folks who've paid thus far. Because we do have some ESSR funding and it's to be used for student engagement. So this policy subcommittee voted to forego charging fees to families for this year, given, you know, the continued struggles that folks are having. And it would be for this year only, and then we would reassess it at budget time. Whether, you know, for further years, we don't know what's going to happen with COVID or where we're going to be at.
We have the access to the federal money, which allows us to 2024. And a lot of this money is to try to help those with disadvantage who are most impacted by this. And we want to encourage. I'll tell you, I've been to a few games. There is more excitement, enthusiasm. I don't know, coach, principal, if you've noticed it, but I'll tell you, it's pouring rain and those kids couldn't have been more excited. And it's something, not that hasn't been in the past, cheerleaders, the bands, everybody is so excited. I think we got to encourage more of that and that's what the money's for.
Right, which is why we wanted to utilize it this year. And then we'll, you know, we're not saying we're wrong, we have to take it.
I'm just saying, it's exactly what the money, we should keep some aside. And then in the event we decide for some reason we don't use it, then we can use it on other things. But I think we should encourage this because student enthusiasm and the staff and everybody, despite everything they've been through.
It was partially, it's partially a huge amount of it for engagement, but also we felt that kids had lost physical education and a bunch of physical activity last year. So it goes toward that. And in terms of busing, so many families are hurting right now. We don't know what busing is going to look like from day to day, never mind now to the end of the year.
We'll be on track. It won't be long. It won't be long.
Okay, we heard that, we heard that was said here.
Yeah, if you give me that damn, Melanie, I'll drive it every day.
I'm setting up Uber as it.
As long as I get chocolate chip cookies and stuff, I will do, I'll do it.
Being paid for chocolate chip cookies. So yeah, so we had voted to eliminate, you know, all the fees for this year in the policy subcommittee. And so we are bringing it forward to the full committee.
So you need a motion?
So we need a motion.
All right, so I make a motion that we sort of waive all those fees as applicable in every area, areas that maybe we didn't think about, that might have been covered tonight. But it's, leave it up to the superintendent to, you know, make judgments on what that might. And that would include things like when the, I don't know if they go to drama competitions or whatever it is. I mean, I don't have a whole list in front of me of all the different activities. So whatever those are, and, and, and subject to anything else that isn't covered by the superintendent.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
All right, so all those in favor?
Any discussion?
Would you like some discussion? I thought we discussed it. I'm sorry.
That's okay. I just, I want to add one thing. I originally proposed this because I believe that this really will help students reengage. And I would, I'm really hoping that we will keep track of numbers. Because I would like to see if we see a significant difference in student engagement with us covering the fees versus when we may have been paying fees. Because I'd like to have that information going forward. If we discover we have twice as much participation this way, then that would be strong evidence that we should try to find some way to keep doing this. And if it's the same, then it's the same. I'd like to know. But I strongly am in favor of doing this.
We take attendance, so that, that's easy enough to capture. And did you have a comment?
I'll just piggyback on the way to comment. We know that ESSR, Paula, please, please jump in like you're saying what you're going on. We know that we have at least, there's at least five, five, five million dollars in there. And that's going to, that's for.
That's ESSR two, yeah.
That's for the student, students, everything we're pertaining to the students. Then we have the ESSR three, which is, which is hovering over the horizon. And so to Mike's point, finding out how much more we have the kids coming in, because there's not, they're not, the families, not so much the kid, but the families don't have to worry about having to pay, is it going to be an incentive for them to come for athletics? Go ahead.
Andrew, then Melissa?
Just real quick, kind of on Michael's point. Can we make sure that, like, assuming this goes through, seeing we kind of did a vote already, just make sure this is like spread far and wide. So that way, if there are people who haven't come forward, because, you know, we're usually pretty good about, you know, waiving fees. But I want to make sure that everybody knows. So if there's anybody who's been hesitant up until this point, they can get involved.
Yeah, this is quite a gift.
Thank you.
And, and Mike, I don't have any issue. I mean, if you want to kind of measure it and see how it works, the only thing is, these kids are under such pressure, they can't like walk anywhere by a retail store or a restaurant without somebody trying to hire them. So they're on, you know, they're like, yeah, we'll pay 18. How much, pay 18 bucks an hour to start? Yeah, okay. So I think we'll be able to see and measure it somehow. But they're under incredible pressure to, to work. And so I know some families that I know have talked about the fact that kids have dropped out of certain, you know, extracurricular activities. And even church, you know, things they do as the tenant church, because, you know, they're working. So, but I do think we got to keep track of it and see what kind of, I mean, the enthusiasm is off the charts. And I think that's because they haven't seen each other in so long.
They missed it for a whole year.
And they're really excited and I think we just keep feeding into it. And, you know, as Brandon said, whatever it is, whatever club it is, or whoever needs the money, that's what the money's for, is to get them back to where they were and, and not only catch up, but maybe some, a few new things that we weren't able to do in the past because kids, not only would have been participated, didn't have the funding to do it.
Melissa? To piggyback on that, because part of the discussion was this, obviously, it really impacts the high school students and some middle school.
The only reason I'm not wearing one is she wants to, and I have one. Does the high school have any budget to have any PPE math? Don't go far. I got tested last week, so they're fine, but I feel like God man out here.
Well, Brandon, that we don't. Ron.
I told my whole car pot.
So let's refocus and let Melissa finish her.
Okay, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
So sorry, it was just, there was discussion though that this really does help, impact the families and the students that are at the high school and some of the middle school. So just piggybacking on there is more opportunities and events coming for the younger kids to give them additional opportunities too. So they're going to get some help as well.
You know, down the road, community development block grant for students, I mean, we're at free reduced lunch for the entire system.
Right.
It pretty much means that we qualify for community development block grant HUD funding. So I'd encourage, if people have new ideas and new things they're working on, in December, we usually do a public, uh, hearing where people can come in and say, listen, here are some of the needs of the community that maybe aren't being met or some new things that we haven't thought of yet. You know, or if the funding runs out, it's another opportunity and another funding source to help continue. If it's after 2024 or next year, look towards those funding sources because that's exactly what they're for. That's exactly what they're for.
That's a very good point. We'll have to follow through with that. Um, we do have a motion and a second on the floor, so please no further discussion. If you'd like to take a vote, all those in favor? Anybody opposed? Motion carries? All right, thank you, everyone. Um, so we need to talk about, um.
Motion to declare surplus equipment?
Sure.
I assume superintendent, that's some of the stuff.
It's.
It makes sense why. Like, what is this? It's a computer from nineteen twenty nine.
I know. We've opened up every closet.
Follow the folks way.
Thank you. Anybody have any discussion on the surplus equipment?
Other than, does anybody want it? I mean, doesn't she, is there a market?
I don't think there's any market.
Everybody has tried to do the same.
Yeah, we've tried.
I know a guy who owned a computer for the museum.
All right, all those in favor? All right, approve. Anybody opposed? It was unanimous. Um, we need to vote on the appropriate money for money from the Kendall funds.
Motion approve funding? I think we talked about it last meeting.
Yes, we did. All right, we've got a motion, a second. Any discussion?
What have you?
Wait a minute, isn't this different than?
This is a different request.
It's a, it's a right to.
I don't have a problem with having feet, but this is a different.
Every year, they have to buy the rights.
Every year, we have to buy the rights.
Right. Nothing's free anymore.
No, no.
But this is the, the rights to the script for.
Right.
Music and music.
Correct.
So as long as it's high school, we can use Kendall funds for this. We'd like them to do the plays.
Yes.
I'm fine with this.
Yep, no second then. All right, all those in favor? Opposed, motion carries. Um, we already voted on the transfer of the land. Um, and we are into new and old business.
Uh, enrollment is in there. You can see that enrollment is going up, which is great.
Yep.
Some of our, our urban friends are not going up, so that makes me feel okay. We do have to clean up our database a little bit because there are students who still have not come to school. So we're trying to find out where those families have gone, what's happening. So Guidance Department is on that. With that being said, the PIC Center is busy every single day, every single day. We have been forewarned that Worcester County sort of, um, after the earthquake in Haiti, um, we're starting to see those families come in. So we have to keep our eye on that right now. But classrooms are at a nice size. We say that we're not closed to school choice K to eight. The high school is still open. There are spots. So it has to be on a, a certain basis and then we look at it. But our class sizes are at a very nice level right now. Yes, Ronnie?
Please, when you say you don't know where they, where they, where they, where they, I just get my. Where they've gone to, is there, is it because they just, you, you can't follow up on where they, where they are or?
Yeah, um, so we're only on J fourteen, so we don't want to take them off your books quite yet. And nobody's requesting their records. That is usually the trigger for us. When somebody is looking for their school records, we're able to, uh, track them down. So, you know, it's been fourteen days. I want to know where children are. So sometimes we don't get somebody to answer the phone. We have families that don't start till after October first. They're in another country.
That's exactly where I'm.
Yeah, so there's all sorts of different reasons. Um, so we are making all those phone calls. It's quite extensive, but we're getting down to it.
And then to piggyback on your statement about children, children, parents, what about the people, the kids coming from down south Louisiana from Hurricane Ida? Have you heard that?
No, that hasn't been our largest impact, um, at this time. We, we are still getting a lot of families, um, from the Dominican, a lot still coming in from Brazil. Our Portuguese population is growing leaps about. It's really interesting. So they're coming from everywhere, really.
What, what, I, I saw that there's another movement from parents who, um, whose children aren't attending schools to get some sort of a remote option. And so I know the state kind of called it bluff and said, well, if you don't come to, if, if you don't come to school, then all bets are off.
Correct.
But what's happened to them? Because then we'd lose those kids.
Homeschool.
And they homeschool and then they come off, so the state made the decision it couldn't be.
Right.
But it's not coming out of there.
Right.
But it's coming out of ours.
So right.
Ten to fifteen, that's, that adds up.
So right now, our homeschool numbers, we're usually around, say, forty five or fifty. We're at seventy. Last year, we were at one ten to one twenty. So we're sitting in the middle of where we are traditionally. So we're still working with those families. A lot of them say as soon as there's a vaccine available, they want their children back in. But they're just not willing to take the risk because.
Our October numbers aren't going to reflect that.
Exactly. So we're trying.
The state said, well, you can't, if you don't come to school, then nothing.
Nothing counts.
There are no options.
Right.
Well, then they're not on the rolls and then we lose them.
It's a lot of money.
Melanie, how much is that? I mean, approximately how much is that?
Thirteen thousand, seventeen thousand kids.
Per student.
CTEI is.
Right. And that's considerable.
That's a good million dollar.
They might come back later, which I hope they do. But then we're back to where we were last year. We, we don't see the revenues to run our system for another, you know, ten months. It doesn't, it just.
You know, Paula, you just said, you don't know, uh, you know, her name, Costa, Costa's her last name?
Renee.
Renee.
She was saying how, you know, there was some, some, uh, like Portuguese, uh, classes or students that they, you know, you didn't have the, is that going to force us to, or force you or the school district to have more Portuguese?
So that's what we're.
Teachers or what?
Yes.
To piggyback on, 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 on what Dean was saying, you were saying, if there's more Portuguese that are coming in.
We're trying.
What's going to happen?
We're trying. So that LPAC group are very, 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 um, you know, they're trying to get their friends to come in and help and be a parent liaison or join their group. We have, we have a handful of Portuguese right now. We'd love a lot more. We can get Spanish, but Portuguese is a little bit tighter. So they help us out quite a bit.
I guess I'm more concerned that kids are missing at this point.
At what point are we following up? Like, are these kids okay with, or DCF call or well checked?
All of that.
All right.
All of that.
And you don't have, you, you, I just put my, you don't have a number for Dean or somebody? Nobody, anybody has a number of how many are missing?
Well, they're not missing. We just don't know where they're at. I like to say that.
So they could have left?
They could have moved. Or they're not, they could be, sometimes our students stay out until much later in the month and then they start school. So we can't unenroll them until somebody asks for those records.
Till we know.
So we have a stack that we're going through and doing the best we can to find.
So they're registered with us.
They're registered.
But they haven't attended yet.
Right.
But they haven't registered somewhere else because we have gotten our records.
Where does Desi fit in this?
Nothing.
They don't do anything.
They don't care. They don't care.
They don't care.
Leave it up to us.
Wouldn't they have a name, a number or something?
No, no.
No.
They leave that up to us.
They don't care. It's not their, that's not their job.
They leave it up to us.
That's our job too.
They should be able to know something.
Well, how would they know? The students are registered here, Ron, and so.
But there's no tracking number that has.
That's what, that's exactly, that's exactly what I'm trying, yes.
But they're not, they're not anywhere.
But they're not going to another school because if they did, they would request the records.
Right. If I went to a private school, there's no requirement that says that they have to go to a private school. If I'm homeschooled, there's no requirement. If I go to Louisiana, I don't even know if there's a requirement down there for them to tell us that a student's going there. Some states have reciprocal and others don't.
Don't, right.
It's not a, 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 a national requirement.
Yeah, it's just, it's a, it's a mystery, but we're on it. We're, we found, I think, almost twenty this week. So.
So that's encouraging. So back to new and old business, I know that we have.
Did you have something, Brandon?
Oh, I was just going to ask on the, the part that the mayor was referencing. I know this didn't go over so well before. But is there any push from superintendents for a hold harmless again? Because, okay, well.
Urban net on Friday.
I don't know how far that'll go, but.
Really, you get the state to count more than once a year.
Right.
Notion that students don't move around. So you can count on October first and know what we have here. It's ridiculous. It's not, it's never been true and it seems to be getting less and less true. They should count like October first to January fifteenth, then April first. And, and look at the trends and do something accordingly. We seem to get a lot of students after October first every year.
Most urban communities do.
Do, yeah, right.
And that's the problem.
And that's people are fluid and moving and transient.
Hence the reason why they leave it October first. It shorts us.
Right. So anything else, Brandon?
I do have something else unrelated, so I have to do an hour.
Yeah, why don't you go ahead and do it now?
A couple of meetings ago, I think Sue and the mayor had also asked, uh, when we had the clubs come and present about money that would be used for band uniforms. Do we, do we know where we stand with that? Because at the game on that Fri- Thursday, you know, the rainy Friday, Friday with no uniforms. I, I just wonder where we stand on that because, you know, they're getting ready to go to Disney and I want to make sure they go with new uniforms.
So there is money, um, there's more than enough money for them to take care of the students that they have right now. So we are asking them to place the order and send us the bill and we will pay it instead of just handing over an allotment of money. So order whatever you need and then let us know.
Okay.
And, oh, yeah, I've had, giving them sizable.
That's the first donation that we need now.
Okay.
Yeah, it's, that's more than enough to cover the relief right now.
And how do we do with the banners?
Oh, thirty?
Twelve thirty.
Thirty out of thirty-three. Good job. Or thirty-six. What'd you say?
Thirty.
Thirty.
Thank you very much.
Good.
Yeah, that's awesome. Awesome.
The problem's going to be, once you put them all up, everyone's going to say, how come I didn't know about, you know, this is, I want to buy one. How do I buy one?
Buy the next one.
Right. I was just going to say, as far as the, um, for the next meeting, we should be talking about the amendments and the delegates for the MASC.
You want to do them now?
Thing, no, no, we didn't bring it with us. So just to let people know if they want to familiarize themselves, but we'll do it next time. Did we get, Peter? Yes. Yeah, it just came. Peter?
I, I know it would be a very brief thing, but I didn't know if it was worth mentioning, um, either, you know, Eileen as the chair or superintendent beacon. Uh, because I think in the last meeting, we mentioned, uh, working with LTV about the Gallagher building. I know that's changed. If we just want to give a quick update so the, so the public knows.
So Fri- this Friday, Ockers, who is one of our, that's our main technology group, are coming in. We spoke with LT, LTV to say what we would need in this role. So we actually are looking to revamp and update, um, the look of apple seeds as well. So all of that will be accommodated. So they'll start this Friday.
Thank you. Yeah, just to be clear, what I was asking and what is, uh, working with LTV to have the ability to broadcast live for school committees.
Because we don't have that ability currently. We don't have the infrastructure here.
Correct.
And we had a conflict at City Hall, which is the only other place that we could do live stream. And we're meeting in person now, so it was unfortunately.
So Steve Momoine will be facilitating that work.
Thank you. I just wanted to make sure the public was aware because we've got a few questions about.
Okay.
Sure.
Did anybody else have anything under new world business? And so do we need to execute?
No session.
Oh.
All right, so in that case.
I packed a sleeping bag, a lunch, extra water.
So at that case, you can, you can.
I like to make that motion to adjourn.
Second.
Don't move.
All right, all those in favor? Awesome. Stay safe and healthy, everyone. Thank you, everybody.